Thank you so much for your patience. We'll go ahead and reconvene the Town Council meeting at 7:10 PM. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. Welcome to your town hall. First up in front of us is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to 30 minutes in total time, which each individual allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. You must sign up ahead of time in order to comment, and that sign up begins 30 minutes before the start of the meeting. The Town Council will accommodate as many speakers as possible during this time with preference to town residents, but if public comment extends beyond the allotted 30 minutes, Town Council will allow comment period at the end of the meeting prior to adjourning for those who signed up before the meeting. As any matters raised by individuals during public comment are not on the agenda, and other potentially interested parties would not therefore be aware of this discussion, with discussion of these items or matters, the Town Council will not engage in dialogue regarding any item raised during public comment. With that fun little paragraph, do I have any members of the public to address this council this evening? Seeing none, we'll open and close public comment at 7:11 PM and moving on to reports and items and comments from Mayor and Council. Mr. Hendricks, let's start with you, sir.
Nothing to report other than just on spring break. Thank you.
Ms. Barrington.
Councilmember Wilks and I attended the NLC, the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, and it was quite an eventful time to be in Washington DC. So, we met with Senators Bennett and Hickenlooper, Congresswoman Lauren Boebert, and they all spoke about Colorado-specific issues, infrastructure, housing. We also had a surprise visit from Vice President JD Vance. He spoke to our group, and he offered some interesting insights also, but I will let Councilmember Wilks fill in the rest.
Councilmember Wilks.
Did you want to talk any about your committee before I go on?
Oh, I did have two committee meetings also. First here, Suburbs Council, where we discussed challenges unique to maturing communities like Parker, and then the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee. We covered sustainable growth, water resilience, the usual. Thanks.
Okay, so on the DC trip, so the Public Safety and Crime Prevention Federal Advocacy Committee, which I sit on, met, and we were specifically talking about funds for our first responders. So, the public safety doesn't just cover our PD, it also covers our fire as well on a federal level, but we actually had the Director of ICE there to have a conversation with us. So, that had some, an hour long of back and forth questions and answers and a lot of insight, which after getting with our legal team here in the next couple of weeks, I'll be presenting all of that to Council as well. Outside of our DC trip, on March 5th, I had the Youth Awards Recognition Awards and Scholarships with Mayor Rivero and Councilmember Franzen. And then on the 6th, I had the Chaparral Teacher Appreciation Event, also with Mayor Rivero and Councilmember Dyak. Had the ribbon cutting for the new Ziggy's Coffee. And then on Friday, Beautiful Framing and Art celebrated their 25-year anniversary since opening in downtown Parker, and went to that celebration event, which was wonderful just to see a business that's been thriving in our community for over two decades. So, I wish them a lot more decades of success as well.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dyak.
Thank you. Let's see here, the 11th Chamber Day at the Capitol with a few other electeds. Good event that the chamber put on. They expanded it to not just their government liaison committee, but the chamber members as well as a few electeds. I think it was a good time to bring some of the state, you know, state government stuff to Parker. We had a great speaker, and it sounds like it's going to potentially be an annual event. So, all you chamber members, I think it would be great to look towards next year for this event. On the 12th, participated in the Parker Arts Cultural Strategic Plan. Once I started talking about culture, specifically music, they kicked me out after, I don't even know. It felt like two seconds, but I think it was a half hour or so. So, did that. On the 13th, we had the E470 Board of Directors Meeting. We had the year-end financial report. Again, over 100 million transactions last year, which is amazing on E470. And we also let out the Sable Boulevard interchange contract up in Adams County. They're doing some work up there, and the future growth is in Adams County and north. So, E470 is proactively trying to build out their road network, expand that up north, so they can be ready and be in a position to hold that growth coming up. And today, I played relief pitcher. Mayor Rivero went to a meeting, which I'm sure we all know about, at the, he attended another meeting, and I spoke to Vail Academy, the freshman class, on a leadership visit. It was an hour. For an introvert, that's scary to have an hour, but, you know, it kind of worked out well. We, I think I had 25 minutes talking about Josh and myself and the rest of council, and our roles and responsibilities, and there was a lot of questions. And before you knew it, I was sort of being, again, shuffled out the door, just like I was with Parker, our strategic plan. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Franzen, anything to report?
Couple things, finally. March 11th was Chamber Day. I thought that was well-attended, and I look forward to that being an annual event. And then, before that, on March 5th, we did have the, what was it called? I'm sorry. The Youth Awards Recognition Awards and Reception with Councilmember Wilks and Mayor, which I thought was really great. I love seeing engagement from the youth, and certainly recognizing their successes and the things they're doing in our community is great. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Hefta.
Yep. So, I had the opportunity to have lunch with a constituent who's a very distinguished member of the community with over 30 years of legal experience in Denver, and he had some ideas which I have passed along to our town staff on matters. I also attended the Day at the Capitol with Eric Franzen and John Dyak and the mayor. And I also attended the Douglas County Homeless Initiative Meeting. And just a few statistics for information here. The latest statistics are that there are 2,279 people living at 60% AMI, or the area median income in Douglas County. 160 are at the 50% AMI, 70 are at the 40% AMI, and 163 are at the 30% AMI, as reported to our Douglas County Homeless Initiative Team. And from the business community, the Douglas County Homeless Initiative Team, Heart Team, is also engaging local businesses, and they had 14 business engagements as well this past quarter. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Real quick for myself, as a lot of us, I was on spring break, and after the years that I've served and learned what I've learned, by default, I go around to other towns, and I just realize how good we've got it. I'm a, you know, I'm a pocket engineer when I'm looking at their stormwater projects, and I'm looking at their roads, and why the stuff is closed and whatnot. And so, it's fun to travel just to realize how great, how great Parker is. Do you want to call attention to Parker Chamber of Commerce Day at the Capitol? I thought that was an incredible event. Hard work by their Government Affairs Committee and TJ Sullivan. Incredible event. Anthony Hartzuk, Representative Anthony Hartzuk from 44, spent half the day with us, spoke to us for a bit. Senator Lisa Frisell came out, out of chambers, to talk to us and spent 15 minutes with us before the Sardar Arms came and wrestled her back in, opposite of Mr. Dyak. And just a great day. And then we heard from, I can't remember, but I do want to point out maybe something a little bit opposite from nowadays, but there's an incredible article. Please take the time to read your local press, because there's a great article about that day in your Parker Chronicle, and talks a little bit about what we did, and who presented, and who talked to us. And so, if you get a chance, please spend some time with that. And then this last Friday, I said I was on spring break, got home Thursday. Friday, I had CML Executive Board, where we looked at even more laws. I think they've got 550 now, and I think they're trying to set some records again this year. So, we look at every law that affects municipalities, and we take a position as Colorado Municipal League on that ultimate decision. Comes down to 21 elected officials for CML, and we take a position, and then we argue for that position down at the Capitol. So, as stuff switches to the second chamber, if you will, right now, everything is pretty much in the chamber of origin. If it passes out of that chamber, it goes to the second chamber, and that's where we get real busy in testifying. And so, I'll spend a lot of time come April down at the State Capitol voicing the opinion of this council at the State Capitol. So, thank you. With that, we move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordnances on consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. Council in front of you are consent agenda items 4A through 4G. I would entertain a motion for approval for items 4A through 4G, please.
Both approve the consent agenda, 4A through 4G?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion from, Mr. Hendricks, a second from Ms. Barrington. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
I.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And consent agenda passes unanimously. And I just will point out, little personal privilege here real quick, in that consent agenda, there was a resolution which established the Mayor Pro Tem and the Acting Mayor, and your new Pro Tem is Mr. Dyak. He's not new. He's been doing it for a little while. But, and I have been doing this for 12 years, and it was really important to me, and I thank Council for that debate, to have Dyak again as my Mayor Pro Tem, and then Acting Mayor will be Councilwoman Laura Hefta. So, thank you guys for that discussion. I appreciate it. And on we go. Next in front of us, resolutions. Item 5, Resolution Number 25-017, a resolution providing consent to the inclusion of lots 1 and 2, Combarck Village filing number 7, Amendment Number 4, within the Cottonwood Highlands Metropolitan District Number 2, a commercial district. Ms. Jamie Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. I appear before you tonight requesting that you approve a resolution providing your consent to the inclusion of property in the Cottonwood Highlands Metropolitan District Number 2. Briefly about this matter, the Cottonwood Highlands Metropolitan District Number 2 is exclusively a commercial district. At the time that the district was formed, there is an area of certain property that was not included within the district as specified in the service plan. In addition, the service plan requires that any inclusions to the district after the establishment of the service plan obtain the consent of Town Council. The additional information to be provided regarding this request for inclusion will be done by the property developer, Mr. Vickers, who is here to answer any specific questions that council may have. The service plan does lay out the requirements of the district, and once included, this property will comply with that service plan as well as the intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, that's been established between the property and the town.
Thank you, Council. Before we hear from Mr. Vickers, do we have any questions specifically for your town attorney? None? Mr. Vickers, if you wouldn't mind gracing us with your presence again. It's been a while, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Vickers. I think I gave my address, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
So, 507 Clayton Street, Denver, Colorado, 80206. It's great to see everybody. I haven't been here for a while.
No.
And it's nice to, I was just reminiscing that I think I've now been developing in the town for over 25 years, so I was saying to Tom, we're all kind of getting along, but I was the developer of Combarck Business Campus, and in that capacity, we retained some property. One of the tracks is the subject track that I'm an owner of and manage, and we are investing considerable amount of money right now privately that will be eligible for public improvements and district bonds at a later date. The, I'm on the board of the Cottonwood District as well, and they've agreed to the petition to allow us to bring that property into the district. The district does not have any debt at this time. So, you know, what typically is important is we will size the bonds according to what properties are in the district at the time of the issuance. I think we're investing around $2.5 to $3 million right now in public improvements. So, we'd very much like your consent to include that property into the district. There's also, I know from just discussions, we'd identified some properties that we'd contemplated excluding from the district. We've decided to retain two of them in the district because there are some public improvements which the O&M mill levies can help us with the maintenance. There is a tract on the east, I'm sorry, the west side of Jordan, which has a large drainage area. We don't really, at this point, think there are any public improvements for that tract, so we may exclude that in the future. But, main purpose of this evening is to include the tract, that MRT 2 tract. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. So, we have, just a reminder, Council, we are here for a commercial district inclusion, and do we have questions specific to that district? No? Todd?
No.
Anne?
I was just curious what future responsibilities, if any, as far as like maintenance, improvements, will we be responsible for those moving forward?
No, it's a good question. No. The, as part of the plat, the town requires a Property Owners Association, which has been formed and has been recorded. The district will enter into an agreement with the Property Owners Association for maintenance of both landscaping, streetscape, and the road maintenance, until which time the district has enough revenue from O&M, which is 10 mills, to take over those responsibilities. It's an average, annual budget for both snow removal and treescape is about $32,000. So, it's not, it's not an inordinately large sum of money, but it's the responsibility of the property owners to fund that on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Randy? Todd?
No questions.
Eric?
No questions. Thank you.
And Laura?
You've answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Vickers.
Thank you. It's good to see you all. Thank you.
Next up, we'll open up for public comment. Is there any members of the public that would like to address item number 5, Resolution 25-017? Please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go back for final thoughts and/or debate. Todd, anything?
No, this seems like a pretty straightforward ask. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Anne?
I appreciate there's no financial impact to the town, and it's good to see the coordination between property owner, the district, and the town. Thank you.
Randy?
Yeah, I like that you're already moving forward with improving the land for all the community that's already around there regardless of the situation. So, thank you for that.
John?
Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Vickers has been around 25 years. We don't know how much longer you have. Here to develop, but, no, I mean, again, I'm just, you know, I think, you know, me being in the, you know, land surveying world many years ago, and being in the selected world, I think Parker has, has had great fortune to have people like Mr. Vickers come into our community and develop. They, they do their best, they try their best to do what's right, not only for themselves, but for those, those landholders, those people, which they're developing for and have developed and have, have, they've let it go, and other people are enjoying it. So, there are a lot of people here in Parker that throughout the years I've met and have just done wonderful things, sometimes at the expense of themselves in order to do the right thing. And every developer has a different story, but they have done that. So, again, thank you, and thank everybody who has done the right thing for Parker.
You're here. Eric?
I have nothing to add.
Laura?
Just the key points on this is that the inclusion is being sought by the district, by the subject property owner, with approval by the district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, Council, I'd entertain a motion on item 5, Resolution 25-017, dash 021, 017. Sorry.
I approve Resolution Number 25-017 as part of the regular agenda.
I have a motion from Hendricks, second from Barrington. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Sorry, yes.
Wilks?
I.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And let the record show that was unanimous. Next up in front of us is the public hearings section. First up, item 6A, ordinance number 1.630.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2025 revised budget for the town of Parker and make appropriations for the same. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:31 PM and introduce Chris Fianadaka, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Chris Fianadaka, Finance Director for the town. And also with me here tonight is Rhonda Willie, the town's Controller, and I want to give her a special thanks for gathering the information for this item and vetting the requests. It is a lot of work, and as you've seen with the number of items that are attached to the ordinance. So, I really want to thank her for her help doing that. So, this item is the first budget revision of the year. We typically do one this time of year and also in the fall, and we'll get into the definition of the budget revisions. But first, we will talk about the stages of the budget process. And essentially, for the 2025 budget, which is what we are amending, requesting to amend tonight, we are in stage five. There's a very faint line around the stage five box, and that is where we are at with the 2025 budget process. It began last March of 2024, and we are in this, at this point of the year, asking for a revision to document the carryovers of unspent budget from last year, in addition to some amendments or supplemental requests for this year. So, just demonstrating that it is a year-round process. So, Section 9.12 of the Parker Home Rule Charter provides the authority to amend the budget during the year with council approval. And there are two parts to this particular amendment, one of which are carryovers, which are reappropriation of unspent budget from the previous year. And this is typically for multi-year capital projects that can span a number of years, that are large dollar amounts. So, whatever is unspent from the prior year, we ask to bring that forward into this year so that it can be utilized to finish the projects. There are also some operating expenditures that were budgeted last year that didn't get executed for various reasons by the end of the year, and so we ask that those funds be brought forward as well into this year's budget. And again, those were items that are budgeted for in the prior year but unspent for that specific purpose. Carryovers do not impact the fund balance that we Carryovers do not impact the fund balance that we discuss with you in, for the long-range planning and what's displayed in the budget book, because these funds were already appropriated in a prior year by you all. So again, carryovers do not have an impact to long-range fund balance or cumulative fund balance. Supplemental requests, on the other hand, are expenditures not anticipated at the time that the budget was developed. So as we know, we need to have some flexibility. Things happen, new situations arise, new projects, some are unavoidable, and some are determined to be really nice to have to maintain the level of service or even expand the level of service that we have. These items do impact the fund balance unless there is offsetting revenue. We do have one situation where there is offsetting revenue, so there is no impact to fund balance. But if there is not, this does have, it is a reduction to fund balance for those items. This is a summary table showing the supplemental expenditures in the first column, so again, those new items that, that hadn't been discussed during the budget process last year. We also have the total dollar amounts of carryovers by fund, again, funds being down on that left-hand side of the chart. Carryovers, again, being funds that were appropriated in a prior year, just being carried forward to be completed or executed in this year. For total change of expenditures for the 2025 budget, so it is significant, it's over $100 million. But we're talking about large dollar amounts in the public improvements fund, as well as the capital renewal and replacement reserve fund. And there are numerous projects, which we will not get into every detail on, it is attached as an exhibit A to the ordinance. I do want to go back to the supplemental expenditures and just discuss those because they are new to the budget for 2025. In the general fund, we have total 449,000 of additional expenditures, and that consists of one additional FTE or personnel in the communications department, and that's for a coordinator to help with the additional events and activities that the town of Parker has chosen to provide its community. And so there has, because of the increased events and engagements with the public, there is a need to have an additional coordinator to help execute those events successfully. Also, the institution of the volunteers in policing services, or VIPS for short, and there are about 228,000 of capital, or not capital costs, but mostly one-time costs, some ongoing cost to establish that program. So there are no salaries because they are volunteers, however, there are costs for vehicles, uniforms, radio, equipment. So much of that is one-time, but there will be ongoing expenses to maintain the vehicles and to replace aging equipment as time goes on. One is 75,000 for, to cover a budget shortfall for fleet vehicles that were on backorder in prior years. As I mentioned, when, when the items are received or the project isn't complete, that budget is left unspent, and we ask to roll it forward. In 2022, the full amount that was needed to bring forward for fleet vehicles was not fully carried forward, so we discovered that the gap was the 75,000 that should have been brought forward into the next year. And again, that's been an ongoing issue these last several years with supply chain issues. So we budget for a certain amount for fleet replacement, and, you know, fleet does their best, obviously, to get those vehicles ordered right away, and we, we typically had received those in the same year as, as ordered, but that has not been the case the last several years. So just getting that administrative carryover corrected this year. And then the last 35,000 is an additional funding for a snowplow that was budgeted in 2025, but was determined that that snowplow was going to cost $35,000 more than initially anticipated, and also a common occurrence with inflation the last several years. So that's the total amount for general fund of 449,000. Then we have 30,000 in the cultural fund that is for additional marketing, well, it's for additional funding for marketing of rental spaces and programming that just wasn't anticipated during that budget process. We do anticipate that the additional marketing would bring in some additional revenue. Some of that additional revenue was indeed budgeted this year without this offsetting expense, but we hope that that'll have a, you know, multi-year future impact on revenue going forward. So we feel that it's, it's worth taking out of the fund balance to increase revenue in the future. Recreation fund, asking for $165,000 for the work that needs to be done on the elevator at the recreation center. It is not operational and needs to be repaired, and that process is already underway. Recreation staff did a really good job of trying to find funding in other areas, but prior to discovering this, which is on the 10-year plan for them to get this serviced and modernized and replaced, however, we're just moving it up because it became a more urgent matter. But they did their due diligence on trying to reallocate other projects, but prior to this, they discovered the additional work was going to be needed, be needed on the H2O Brian pool replaster. So they had to reallocate some other items to that, which left really no other funding for the elevator. The public improvements fund, there are two additional projects. Funding is needed for the Parker Water and Sanitation water line along the Stro widening project, and also a looking glass bridge repair in that development. And both of those items will be fully reimbursed by Parker Water and also by the developer for the looking glass bridge repair. So total of 745,000 for those two projects, but fully reimbursed, so the net impact to that fund is zero on that one. So this is a summary of the impact to the fund balances for those supplemental requests and the percentages of fund balance, both for the 2025 budgeted fund balance, which you'll see in the budget book, and then after these supplemental requests, what that looks like. So for the general fund, it's a very small impact because under half a million, when you're talking about a 42, $43 million budget, it is a, it's a smaller impact to that. Cultural fund, $30,000 is, is not a lot of money, but their fund balance is quite a bit smaller than the general fund, so we do, you know, count every penny with the cultural fund right now. But again, that marketing is going to be really important for them in the next few years. And then recreation fund, the elevator, the impact of the drawn fund balance for the elevator will take them down to the 17%. Not exactly where we'd like to be for that fund balance, both cultural fund and recreation fund, but we still feel that those are healthy for operating reserves for those two funds, and they do have smaller fund balances overall. Any questions?
All right, counsel. Laura, I'll start with you.
Yeah, the, the public improvement fund looks to be one of the largest, and you said that was with Parker Water and Sanitation and Looking Glass?
Yes.
And that is at 745,000?
Yes.
And you said that's fully reimbursable from Parker Water and Looking Glass as well?
Yes.
And is that?
For both projects.
Okay, the entire amount?
Yep.
And it comes back to us with when, within, what, if a year or less, or interest, or?
I think within the same, within the same year.
Before you spend any, with interest, or no? You don't, you don't get any interest on that, within the same year, though?
Right.
Thank you so much.
Eric? Welcome to municipal budgeting.
So I had a question on the fund, fund balances. Obviously, we're bringing some of those balances down. Do we have any measurement to determine what they should be, right? Is there like a common practice where we say, hey, we want 15% in the recreation fund, so we are overbalanced there? Likewise, I guess for each one, can you speak to that?
Sure. So the Government Finance Officers Association recommends 16.7% fund balance for operating funds, for non-capital operating funds. But for the general fund, for the town of Parker, there is, there is a fund balance policy to keep that at 25%. So 25% is typically very, very healthy and quite high compared to the GFOA recommendation. You'll see that the general fund for town of Parker currently, or the planned fund balance for the end of this year is quite high, in the 55, 54% range. And so that's something that was discussed with council in August over, with the long-range planning, and will be discussed with you again before we really get into having the specific budget discussions for 2026. But we feel that that high fund balance for the general fund really shields us against the future leveling off of growth and the leveling off of revenue that may and probably will come with that. And so that is a high fund balance for the general fund, but we feel that it really is necessary to shield Parker for the future years because the long-range plan that we presented in August showed that at the end of the 10 years, 10-year plan, we're back down to the 25%. So that's something we are trying to protect and shield as much as possible. And then for cultural fund and recreation fund, there's not the same policy, written policy from council on those funds. So I think the, the feeling has been to try to keep those similar to the general fund with the 25% reserve. However, it's not mandated, and even the GFOA is a recommendation. Certainly, other communities have fund balances lower than their recommendation. It's not a law, and it is the best practice. But both cultural and recreation funds have operating and capital projects, and so, but the fund balance is calculated on all expenditures, capital and ongoing regular operating. So it's, it's really difficult to say what the exact right fund balance is for those because we really worry about operating, the daily operating of those funds. If something goes awry with the economy, we can freeze capital projects. It's not something we like to do, that's not ideal, but we could, and those are one-time, not ongoing. It's more to, the reserves are really to shield against that ongoing operating. And we feel that those percentages, because they're calculated on operating and capital for a given year, it's still very sufficient. And, and I feel comfortable in talking with town manager's office and the department directors over those funds, that that's still adequate. The goal will be to try to get those up whenever possible to increase that, but for now, we feel that that's adequate.
And then can you talk about the, the volunteers in police service, the VIPS program? I know we, we outlined $228,000 in cost, but do we, do we think that there's going to be some, I guess, future cost savings? Is this an investment to, to do some cost savings to earn revenue, whatever? Can you talk about that?
Sure. I, I think, and, and the police department would speak to this a little more eloquently than I would, but in my mind, I think this is a wise investment because it will reduce some of that burden on current police officers and CSOs. So while it may not be a direct cost savings on salaries, it certainly frees up existing police officers to perform their duties on patrol and public safety, whereas the volunteers can maybe handle some of the lower acuity calls and, you know, administrative things that can free up our officers.
And I think it's important to point out on the, the VIPS program, this is something that's, and I know that's not what's necessarily in front of us, but, you know, the, we, we are one of the few municipalities in the metro that don't have this program currently. You know, the city of Denver quantifies it, they, they file an annual report, and looking at their annual report, they, they show that they had $706,000 of cost savings, of direct cost savings from this program that supplements our, their police force. So, you know, while I think, you know, $228,000 of unbudgeted funds to, to go and, and pay for something like this, right? This is an investment in the future that, that truly is going to save time, energy, and money for our, for our police force. So just wanted to make sure that was on, on record. That's it. Thank you.
So this is, this is questions?
This is questions.
But I'll try to make it a question. I kind of piggyback on what, what Eric said, and I, so Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that's opening it up to a question.
Would it be safe to say?
Would it be safe to say? Am I correct, maybe? But no, we, we had a, we had a budget retreat the end of last year. We kind of went through this extensively, the budget. You, you have the slide of the general fund up at 55%, 54%. We have a policy, we have tools that we, that we use to say this is, this is at least what we want in the general fund, and if you take a look at the 25% policy and the 55% balance, you know, fund balance, you're like, that's high, we should, we should, why is that? And there's another tool that we have, it's, I think Chris alluded to it, we have this 10-year, 10-year projection, and, and that came up, you know, probably about five years ago, when we were trying to figure out, is there a way to do something, reduce some type of expense, revenue stream to kind of give, there's, give citizens back, but still, still get to the, the point that they know they have services that they've, that they've expected and will continue to expect at or above. And through this process, we have this 10-year plan that we have kind of relied upon, and, you know, I think, so again, am I correct that, that the 55% of fund balance, general fund balance is a point in time? But with, with the 10-year projection, it shows us that that is going to decrease because we have future expenses that we are going to need to utilize the general fund in order to take care of, to meet or exceed the service level that citizens are used to.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Perfect. Counsel member Wilks.
So, if I turn this on? There we go. So on the carryovers, those are funds that have already been accounted with prior approval from council. They're not new funds that are going in that we can decide we want to do something else with them. Those are specifically the 1.8 million is specifically already allocated funds, correct?
The carryover column, it's, yeah, just under 107 million total across all funds is, yeah, for that purpose.
And out of that, about 60 million is for our public improvement, so things that give back to our community and make things better for all of our, all of our citizens, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. And then on the 165,000 for the elevator for the rec center, since the rec center, or since elevator's not in use right now, fixing that's actually going to keep us compliant with the ADA restrictions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Barrington?
Would it be safe to say that in all of your years doing budgets for other municipalities, I could ask Rhonda this, probably any staff, has there ever been a year where there haven't, hasn't been a surprise?
Not to my knowledge, no. Not in my experience. And that's why we plan for that, but also there are opportunities that arise that we need to take advantage of so that they might, it's just an opportune time, so, yeah. If we had a crystal ball?
It would make budgeting much easier. Thank you. Thanks for everything you do. Thank you.
Todd?
Just a quick question on carryovers. What could cause a carryover? It could be something as simple as a scheduling delay or materials and just the project gets pushed out a different year?
Absolutely. Yep, supply chain issues, but a lot of, especially in the public improvements fund, they're just larger, more complicated, multi-year infrastructure projects like a Lincoln widening, Stro widening, that don't just get started and finished in a, in a single year. And so it's just making sure that those funds carry forward to finish those projects.
Thank you. All right. Seeing those questions, and we are the applicant ourselves, we'll move on to public comment. I'd like to open public comment at 7:53 PM on this question, ordinance number 1.630.1, our budget question. Is there any member from the public that wishes to address this counsel on this question? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:53 and, and close public hearing, also close public hearing at 7:53 and move on to final comments or debate from council. council. Let's start with councilmember Hefta, please.
I just want to thank the award-winning finance department and team. Uh, thank you, special thanks to Rhonda Willie, who has, has been here a long time and is overseeing two different finance directors now.
That's right. Yes, Rhonda.
And of course, thank you, Chris Vandaka, as well, for your explanation of all this. Um, no, it, this to me is quite normal. Towns carry large budgets, you're going to have carryovers, you're going to have supplementals, and issues come up all the time in a town with regards to equipment and infrastructure. So to me, this is quite normal and you've provided an excellent, excellent explanation of every single item for the pub, public for the 2025 budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Eric, comments?
So, a couple, couple, couple points, I think, that are important to point out. Um, you know, the, the recreational side, you know, replacing an elevator and, and I don't think we're doing a full replacement, I think we're, we're refurbishing what we've got. It needs to be operational, right? It's to comply with ADA code, that's, thank you for bringing that up. Um, the other, the other two, I, I guess, big pieces here in, under the cultural fund and public improvement fund, you know, there are components of this that are setting us up for future, uh, either revenue or savings, which I think is the, is the right thing to do. It's the right way to spend, spend today's money to save some money in the future, um, with, with efficiencies. That's it. Thank you, guys. Congratulations on the award.
Thank you, Eric. John?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, uh, I think revisions, again, they're, they're always the case in the public improvement world. Um, it would be fantastic if every major project would just be within a calendar year, but that is, that's not the case. Um, so within that public improvement fund, that's, that's the reason why you got some big numbers there, um, because we're in the middle of a pretty profound, um, um, capital improvement, uh, cycle within, uh, public works. So again, appreciate the work, uh, finance and all the other departments and I'm supportive.
Thank you, John. Brandy?
Yeah, I mean, anytime we can do things to improve our experience for everybody, I love, and I especially love, you know, the council approved and we were able to make it in the budget for the, I'm going to call them the VIPs, the, that are helping out our PD because it's just, it's going to give some relief to our officers, which allows them to do their job better and that's what keeps Parker so amazing and safe. So anytime we can help with our public safety, I'm a big fan and big component of. So I want to thank you for, you know, finding a way to make that work with council's wishes and finding a way to, um, still keep us well above water and looking forward to the future and understanding that in 10 years, we're, we're going to be dropping that by over 50% and, you know, the town's going to be around longer than 10 years. So I appreciate all of the, the forward thinking and the work that goes into this and I appreciate all of the work that you've done with these revisions, so thank you.
Anne?
I think it's great to see unspent funds being rolled forward responsibly, um, especially with multi-year capital projects. But I was thinking about a statistic or just some numbers that I heard when we were in DC and I, I know everybody's tired of hearing about supply chain issues, but they are still very real. And even though we don't, we don't do, um, fire here in Parker, I have heard that it's 18 to 24 months to get
Yeah, summer. Yeah, summer.
Summers, okay. To get a fire truck or a hook and ladder, I mean, so it's, it's real. But thank you for all your work and again, congratulations on your, your award.
Todd?
Yeah, a lot of great detail and, uh, appreciate all the work and I'm in support of this.
Thank you. And then just real quick before I call for a motion, I, it's been referenced a few times, so I'm going to take the opportunity to, to, uh, tout our finance department. Um, they won, um, the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, they also received special recognition in earning the highest possible score from all three reviewers in categories of long-range operational financial plans, strategic goals, and strategies and capital programs. So well done. I think council's referenced it, it is, uh, it is huge. This is not the first time we've won, is it? Um, I can't ask you more questions.
It's the 20th, 20th, 21st. I think it might be the 21st.
Excellent.
And also want to recognize that we once again, um, got the same award from GFOA for the annual comprehensive financial report, which has also been received every year. So, um, big deal to get both of those awards and very proud.
And I think that, that shows that, uh, this council has now and, and will always and has definitely in the past, taken, uh, fiscal conservancy very seriously and it's recognized nationally. So well done, guys. Um, with that, I would entertain a motion, council, on ordinance number 1.630.1 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 1 dot 630 dot 1 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Hefta, a second from Franzen. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0. Next in front of us, uh, I would like to open the public hearing for the unplanted Stro Ranch, I am sorry, item 6B, open the public hearing for unplanted Stro Ranch Road and J Morgan Boulevard, Boulevard right-of-way, uh, in two parts. First, we have resolution number 2, 25 dash 008. A resolution to set forth the town council's finding of fact and conclusions as to the eligibility of the town, of the Town Stro Road and J Morgan Boulevard right-of-way property for the annexation into the Town of Parker. And then part two, ordinance number 2.285 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annac- and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory known as the Town Stro Ranch and J Morgan Boulevard right-of-way property in Douglas County. Presenting, we have Mr. Klass. Oh, and Mr. Matthews. Wow, CD and engineering together.
At, at the same table. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening, as noted, is the unplatted Stro Ranch Road and J Morgan Boulevard right-of-way annexation. The Town of Parker is proposing to annex, uh, additional right-of-way for the future widening of Stro Road and the extension of J Morgan Boulevard to the south of Stro Road. The property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Stro Road and J Morgan Boulevard. On February 3rd, 2025, town council approved resolution number 25 dash 007, determining that the property is in substantial compliance with the state law governing annexation and set a public hearing for today, March 24th, 2025. On March 4th, 2025, town council approved ordinance number 2.285 on first reading. Uh, in June of 2017, Town of Parker entered into an agreement for the sale and purchase of a 3.1 acre portion of the Creekside Equestrian property. The property is currently zoned A1, agricultural 1, in unincorporated Douglas County. The annexation of the property will support the town's planned capital projects of widening Stro Road and extending J Morgan Boulevard. This action will also incorporate the property into the town's boundary and clarify responsibility for maintenance, operations, and ownership of the right-of-way. The subject property is eligible for annexation because it's contiguous to the town, located within the municipal planning area, and identified as a candidate for future annexation by the adopted three-mile area plan and Parker 2035 master plan. The town has submitted an annexation petition as required by the municipal code and town charter. A concurrent zoning is not necessary because the town will use this property as right-of-way. Tonight's hearing is to consider the eligibility of the subject property to be annexed into the town. Um, town council will also be considering the standard to review in support of an annexation determination found in the municipal code and the town charter. Staff has reviewed the proposal against the requirements for an annexation and has determined that the standards have been met and the public notice requirements have been met as well. Therefore, staff recommends town council approve the unplatted Stro Ranch Road and J Morgan Boulevard right-of-way annexation, uh, resolution and ordinance. This concludes staff report. As always, I'm available for any questions. Also, as noted, Nathan Klass is also here as the project manager with any, uh, for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate that. Thank you, Nathan. Um, council will note also that the applicant is, is ourselves, it is the town, so this, uh, serves as question both for staff and applicant. Um, start with, uh, Brandy.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Anne?
So, just out of curiosity, the town, um, purchased this, this in 2017. Why, why didn't we annex it then? Do you just have to wait until it makes sense for a project that we're doing?
So the reason is we were finalizing the design, making sure that everything was correct with the right-of-way limits and the design was going to fit within what we were looking for, so that's, we were just waiting for the right time, it's just a timing thing.
Thank you.
Todd?
No questions.
John?
No, comments.
Okay. Eric?
No questions.
Laura?
Just briefly, when you are annexing, you're adding an expense just despite the revenue remaining the same. So can you tell me, will this be a significant expense by this annexation?
So, so the annexation itself won't cause an additional expense. The construction of the road, there will be ma- the construction of the road costs and the maintenance, and I can let Nathan speak to that. But the annexation itself is just adding the property into the town. So there's no, that piece, there's no ongoing expense.
If Nathan would address the road, thank you.
So yes, we, there will be added expense, but this is a needed improvement for the town with the additional traffic and I will be speaking to, um, the reason why we should be doing this, uh, in a later presentation tonight. Um, but yes, there will be added maintenance expense, but also there could be and potentially is a cost savings because of the lack of, um, or for the road being in current disrepair and the amount of maintenance we're currently doing to it. So reconstruct will help reduce long-term maintenance, um, and in turn costing less. So it's kind of, I would say, a net zero overall.
Thank you.
I just, just one quick question for me. Obviously, our neighbors to the east is South Metro Fire and they would need more access or they would entertain more access. This allows us to put, you know, a signal there. Does this allowing, the annexation allowing us to put a signal, does that negate their emergency signal or do they come out on the same side? Do we know that?
Correct, yes. So they, we will be getting rid of the temporary signal that's there and doing a full signalized intersection of J Morgan and Stro, yes.
And then to the west?
Their access is going to be through that J Morgan extension that'll connect to their, um, their driveway that's there.
Okay. And then the second question to the west is Creekside Equestrian. Have they been notified? Are they fully aware what we're doing here?
They are aware and they're also here tonight.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. All right. Well, and this was that. Um, seeing no other questions in front of council, um, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm sorry, no, first I will open public comment at 8:06 PM. Do I have any members of the public that is willing to address council tonight on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment at 8:07 PM and I will also close public hearing at 8:07 and move on to council comments and/or debate. Brandy?
Well, I mean, bringing something in that we've owned for, what, would you say, 2017? And just making it viable for us and the fact that adjacent property owners are here and don't have, you know, anything negative to say, I think speaks a lot. So, um, I appreciate the hard work on this that staff has done, so thank you.
Anne?
I think it meets all state and municipal standards, including contiguity, contiguity, serviceability, consistency with the three-mile plan, and I'm, I am in favor.
Todd?
I, I agree and I'm in favor as well.
John?
Yeah, no, I mean, this is, um, you know, a continuing effort to kind of improve, uh, from the last innings, if you will, of trying to get these, all these improvements done. Um, it's kind of a patchwork quilt. Sometimes you, you buy things because, uh, buy, buy property because it's, it's opportunistic and you have to go through a process to get to the end result and that's when you kind of true things up. And I think that's the reason for this item. Um, it, it would be great if it was easy, it's just, um, uh, digging up the asphalt and putting down new, new asphalt or putting additional asphalt down, but you got utility locates, you got to potentially acquire, acquire right-of-way, you got to interact with, um, uh, neighbors to make sure that you don't, um, you don't create issues for, for them and their businesses or their, or their homes. Um, it's a very complex process and it's very tedious and, um, you know, I think, uh, I thank the public work staff and I think Bryce too, to kind of help, help us facilitate this. And with that, I'm supportive.
Excellent. Eric?
I have nothing to add, I'm also supportive.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, as councilmember Dyak has mentioned, this is, is very, this is a complex and legalistic process, as I think councilmember Barrington mentioned as well. You have to comply with Colorado revised statutes. You have to have a petition, an annexa- annexation petition in accordance with provisions of the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. And you have to comply with Colorado state law requirements, which there are seven right now. So our expert legal staff and our engineers, um, and our planning commission all have to work together to bring this to us. And this also helps the citizens of residents of Parker, that intersection right now is a well-traveled intersection. We have two members of the public here that own property by that, who have no objection to this. Um, and so I think we have a really good record on this matter overall. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, my last statement is there's obviously improvements. We have Stro Bridge coming and, and four lanes to this area. This is a much-needed light for, for Stro and for our neighbors, uh, on the southern outside of Stro. So well done, uh, well planned and, and I appreciate council with that. I would entertain a motion on ord- I'm sorry, on first resolution number 25 dash 008, please.
I move to approve resolution number 25 dash 008.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Barrington, a second, I'm sorry, a motion from Hendricks, second from Barrington. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Laura, yes. That passes unanimously. Moving on next, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 2.285 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 2 dot 285 on second reading.
Second.
I'm going to give that to Laura. Is that a heard? I have a, a, a motion from Hendricks, a second from Hefta. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Aye.
Laura?
Yes.
That also passes unanimously. Thank you very much, appreciate it, well done. Um, next up in front of us is ordinances. Uh, ordinance number 1.643 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the roadway connection agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Prairie Point Community Authority Board concerning King's Point Way. The one and only, Mr. Chris Hudson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. To give you some background on this, uh, this started back in 2017, about the same time as the Stro Road right-of-way we were just talking about. But, uh, we ended annexation agreement with Douglas County Associates. We were required to design and construct King's Point Way from Cottonwood Drive to, to the limits of their property near Aurora Parkway. Town subsequently commenced design efforts for King's Point Way after that, that agreement was executed. And we contacted multiple landlords along the way, including the ones in the north of the Arapaho County line because we had to make this connection up to Aurora Parkway. And due to a planned ownership change at that time between, they were getting ready to sell the property, um, they didn't want to give us the right-of-way or easements necessary to fill and construct our obligation under the 2017 agreement. Therefore, we revised the design slightly back on the north, uh, ultimately leaving a gap between what we had committed to construct. Uh, and this is 50-foot gap is why we're here tonight. Um, most people don't realize we didn't build everything. We didn't. We had 50 feet left to go on the north. This is a vicinity map. Arapaho County line runs through the middle of the map there and we have constructed King's Point Way up. We'll, we'll zoom in a little bit more. We're dealing with the property owner to the north and this is the, now called the Prairie Point Development, was originally called the King's Point Development. This is, uh, the roadway connection gap, there's a roundabout that's being proposed at the Aurora Parkway, King's Point Way intersection. Uh, we've got roughly 50 feet, what I call the south leg of the roundabout, yet to be built. Now, keep in mind, the Aurora Parkway developer is going to be building Aurora Parkway. And so, we've been talking to him for several years now about, hey, can't you just build this leg concurrently with your bigger project? So, continued background, we built the road in 2019. Ownership of the Prairie Point developer, the Prairie Point Development, which is, was previously called King's Point, happened about that same time as construction. In 2020, we had COVID, developer didn't want to think about developing. This thing languished, went through a series of staff changes. Continue to follow up. In 2024, we started getting some traction because they're getting ready to start moving some ground on the Prairie Point Development. They agreed verbally that they could build this, design and build this concurrently with the Aurora Parkway construction. Earlier this year, we worked out those details finally. This is my fifth person I've worked with there since 2017. I'm not counting one of the people that I'm actually going, has come back around because various people have left. We've agreed to make a design payment of $6,700 following the execution of this agreement. This whole area is in the city of Aurora. So, it's actually being designed to Aurora standards by the Prairie Point developer and will be constructed by the Prairie Point developer. But we're going to reimburse that design that they got done. And then, construction payment ultimately will be based on unit pricing that's in their development agreement that they're going to enter into. They're bidding out the improvements for Aurora Parkway. The developer is up there. And again, this unit pricing is what we'll talk about a little bit more. It's an exhibit to the contract. We have agreed to all the, so many square yards of concrete sidewalk. Then you feed a curb and gutter. Therefore, the highlighted area there is what we're talking about. You can see the roundabout in the north, the black line that goes about midway through. There was a property ownership change. It's also the Aurora Douglas County line. We're responsible for the area to the south of that red line there, 50 feet. I call it the south leg. This is also another exhibit that's in the IGA. We've agreed to all the units necessary, units of measure and quantities involved to build this last leg. What the developer will do after they award a contract to the, to build Aurora Parkway, they go through a bidding process, this will be updated. Right now, it's estimated to be around 60 grand. We budgeted and appropriated more than that in this year's budget. So, this should come together this year, so we'll be able to make payment once they award a contract. With that, an ordinance is required to approve this roadway connection agreement. This is the simplest approach to get this done. This may seem like a big step. Otherwise, the town would have to go and build a 50-foot segment of road in the city of Aurora. Did that once, don't want to go back again to Aurora. I like it, I like it on this side of the county, this side of the county line. Staff recommends that the town council approve this ordinance on second reading. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have about this.
Thank you. John, I'll start with you.
Okay. The easy, the easy question was, why would the Town of Parker build a road in the city of Aurora?
Had to do with this annexation agreement. Don't know all the details, but had to do with some rezoning of some property. And we agreed, they changed some zoning, and we agreed to build the road. And this has to do with property in the Town of Parker down near Cottonwood Drive. I think it was rezoning to commercial. I'd have to go back and understand the full agreement in 2017. I don't know the details. John?
Yeah, no, I think there's a, many years ago, too, to kind of add to Chris, there was some more of a political thing where Aurora potentially did not want us to connect. Again, long ago, far away. And, you know, with our commerce there being Trader, you know, Trader Joe's and Whole Foods and Costco, it would be great to create that grid network that Chris loves, the access for everyone to kind of get into Parker so they can enjoy shopping in our fair town. And also, that, you know, from a council standpoint, that was more opportunistic just to ensure that we had the connectivity for those great people that are going to build in the city of Aurora to come in and spend their dollars, and we collect sales tax from them. So, again, it only benefits our local community. That wasn't a question.
Not a question.
But...
He nodded.
What is?
Wouldn't you agree?
Yeah. Wouldn't you agree that that was potentially the situation?
Thanks, Alice Trebek.
No, yes, yes, yes. No, jeopardy is good. But, no, and I guess the only other question I would have is, with us talking about this, it sounds like that Aurora Parkway potentially could be constructed. What are the limits of Aurora Parkway? And what is the timeline, just for the public?
So, what I'm being told by the Prairie Point developer, they're going to be building from Parker Road going east to King's Point Way. At that point, they're going to grade out, but not construct further to the east at this point. They have roads going to the north that actually will snake around E-470. If I was to go, I don't see if I can go. I can't. Well, of course, I can't go back. Go back. They have roads that are actually going to the north from King's Point Way that snake around the north side of E-470 that go up to, to Aurora. I think it's a school up there, middle school? That's actually a crossover Ireland. And then, the Prairie Point Development actually has development on the other side of E-470. City of Aurora is responsible for building the Aurora Parkway Bridge. We are hearing various stories, but they don't have the funding for it. Anywhere from five to 10 more years, it's to be built at some point in the future.
Yeah. So, big picture, it would be great if we all had the money to build something where it connected where it needed to. But again, all we can do is what we can do when the time permits. And this is, this is our time to build our 50-foot commitment.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Eric?
So, after we build our, after we engage the developer to build this portion, who pays for the maintenance of that 50-foot strip?
Aurora.
And then, you, by utilizing the developer, we think there's better savings because of the scale and scope?
Yeah, anytime you build it, it's economy of scale. And they are building, they will be building thousands of feet of road with their developer, with their development. Let's ride those coattails as opposed to a standalone project to build 50 feet of road. So, it's all about economy of scale.
Yep. Thank you.
Laura?
I have yielded my time to Councilmember Dyak and Fransen for the discussion of the missing section of the roadway. Thank you.
Brandy?
Yes, since we are in an IGA, what would be the consequences if we didn't move forward with completing that?
Well, we would, we have to finish per the annexation agreement that we entered into back in 2017. We'd probably get sued, and we would lose. I'm not a legal expert. I'm not an attorney. I don't play one on TV, but I would think we would lose. We have a contract to do this, and we're following through on our commitment that we entered into in 2017.
So, it's safe to say that by doing this and having Aurora build that, we're completing our contract that we have agreed to without really spending our dollars on it and our staff's efforts on it?
Ultimately, it's our dollars to pay for the gap, but Aurora will be maintaining it, and we'll be able to, it's huge to follow through on your commitments. And this was a commitment we made. This is why we've been having discussions with them for the last five years. We want to follow through on this commitment. We want to get this built.
Thank you.
Anne?
I'm just excited. It seems like it's moving forward slowly. But to what, to reiterate what Councilmember Dyak said, it will make it easier for Aurora to come in and spend their tax dollars and then drive back to Aurora.
Wouldn't you agree?
Wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
I think, right?
It will. So, John brought up a thing. I've been pushing for years. We have to have a grid of roads. We just can't have cul-de-sacs everywhere. And this is one of those locations trying to get some of the pressure off of Parker Road. And it's all about the grid. This is an important link that's been talked about for 20 years. As John said, there was a point that Aurora didn't want it. They saw the benefit of it, and ultimately, we're getting it built.
Todd?
No questions.
All right. Seeing no further questions from council, I'll leave a public comment at 8:23. Any members of the public wishing to address council? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:24 and move on to closing comments. Where did I start? Start with Laura this time.
I support building the missing section of the roadway, and this is vital to the town. Thank you.
Eric?
I love the approach. Let's, economy's of scale. You said it. Let's have the developer help us on this one. So, I'm in full support.
John?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good first step. Make our connection, take care of our obligations. Great. I think the greater picture is for City of Aurora developer to kind of go east and go over E-470. And at some point, it would be fantastic if they connect the pine at some point in time. And then, that's more of a Douglas County thing. But again, these, these things are very complex. You got to strike while the iron's hot. You got to strike while the political alignment is there. I think we have done that to this point. It's been fantastic. We are just hoping and praying that we get the rest of the road so we can make it a better grid system so Chris can sleep well at night. Thank you.
Brandy?
Yeah, the collaboration that you have done over many, many years with our neighbors to the north is fantastic. And I'm glad that we will finally be able to put this IGA to bed and move on, and I appreciate all the work.
Anne?
I think it's just smart to piggyback on this construction, and it's going to also reduce the disruption and, I think, save money in the long run.
And Todd?
Thank you.
Yeah, lastly, you took my point, but it was exactly that. It was the grid. It was relieving pressure on Parker Road, which affects every citizen in Parker going north, unfortunately. And so, if we can get that traffic, that commercial traffic, to have their own road, was why we did what we did. It looks like the road to go nowhere. Nobody foresaw COVID and kind of put everything on hold for a few years, but I'm glad it's back in front of us. And then, just a real irrelevant question, was that, was that a below-grade sidewalk I saw going underneath that?
Not a below-grade. So, the East-West Trail?
Yeah.
Not the East-West Trail, excuse me, High Plains Trail. It's going through, it'd be crossing the south leg of the roundabout. That's what you actually see there. So, it comes from the bridge we built a couple of years ago. Arapaho County is, in the next couple of months, will be bidding this out to finish the connection over to E-470 this year.
Awesome.
That's another project that's been, been dealing with for nearly two decades. So, it's finally coming together.
Where's Dennis Trapp?
He's retired, so...
That's how long it's been.
All right, council, without that last question messing with your vote here, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.643 on second reading, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.643 on second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Fransen, a second from Mr. Dyak. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously. Next up, and last in front of us, is contracts over $500,000. The Stroh Road Widening Project, Capital Improvement Plan 23-003, construction contract award. Nathan, take it away, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Excited to present to you contracts over $500,000 for the Stroh Road Widening Project. You've seen this vicinity map a few times now here. Hopefully, well, it's not going to be the last time. There's two more times. I'll be, I'll be at the next one as well. But, so, working west to east, we're widening Stroh to get an extra through lane on the west side of Crowfoot Valley Road, Matsumbaka Road. We're widening two lanes to the south with a bridge over Cherry Creek between Crowfoot Valley Road, Matsumbaka Road, and J. Morgan. We're extending J. Morgan to the south to connect to the fire station, as we previously discussed earlier tonight, and adding a signalized intersection at J. Morgan Boulevard and Stroh Road. So, to give a little background, the current pavement condition of Stroh Road between J. Morgan and Matsumbaka Crowfoot Valley Road is poor. Existing concrete pavement and bridge approaches have been repaired with asphaltic mast stick for several years. This stretch of road is well beyond its design life. In 2021, the town completed design of the extension of J. Morgan Boulevard. It was determined that it would be best use of town funds to combine that project with the widening of Stroh. Chambers Road Extension south of Hess is currently underway with a planned connection to Stroh Road. This future connection will further increase traffic on Stroh Road. The combination of the improvements of J. Morgan Boulevard Intersection, reconstruction of the existing pavement, and widening efforts will satisfy current and future traffic on Stroh Road. On February 20th, 2024, town council approved the final design for contract for the Stroh Widening Project. We put this project out to bid on February 6th of this year. Publicly opened bids on March 13th. We received six responsible bids ranging from $17 million to $27 million. The lowest responsible bid was from F&amp;F Construction, Inc. F&amp;F Construction, Inc. is a reputable contractor in the area that has completed multiple projects locally of similar size. A portion of the total construction cost will be paid for by Parker Water and Sanitation District as reimbursement for the installation of a new effluent water line across Stroh Road as per an IGA executed by town council on February 18th. Also to note, there's some developers that are adjacent to this property that will also be paying for a portion of this construction cost as well. So, the construction schedule, looking to recommend it award of the construction contract tonight. Notice the proceed, we're looking to go in March of this year, possibly early April. And then, anticipation construction schedule will be complete fall of 2026. I recommend to approve the construction contract with F&amp;F Construction, Inc. in the amount of $17,797,112.71. Funds are available to cover the construction costs in the 2025 Highway and Streets Capital Project Fund. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Brandy, we'll start with you, please.
So, you had mentioned Parker Water and Sanitation District is covering some of them. Can you give me that dollar amount of what they are covering?
It's around $450,000 is what their bid schedule came out to. And we've notified them, and the invoice has been sent. And at per the IGA executed, they'll be making payment within 30 days.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anne?
So, this was the lowest responsible bid. Can you talk a little bit about that? Was there one that was low, or you just, they didn't?
No, this was the lowest bid, yeah. Lowest responsible bidders, we have to verify all of the information they've submitted as correct, verify references, make sure that everything is, their bid checks out okay. They don't have any major busts or anything like that. There's sometimes extremely low bids that could be low bid, but they missed an entire bid schedule or something along those lines. So, this was the lowest bid for the project, and they were also the responsible bidder as well.
Thank you.
Todd?
No questions.
John?
Yeah. So, with, with our last contract that we let out, Lincoln, we, I think we saved about $3 million based off the engineering estimate. This, I think we've saved less. I think it's a couple hundred thousand. Again, we're speculating, but is this the result of maybe the complexity of the job? Is it sort of, everybody who's sort of bid on these things has their full allotment, and they're going to move forward? I know I'm asking you to speculate, but just looking for some guidance, some wisdom from these experts in front of us here as to maybe why we didn't get down lower, if you will.
So, John, there is some cost savings here in the overall budget, not to the level as Lincoln. We're actually kind of seeing, we think, a leveling off of construction unit pricing. The last few years, the inflation has just been 15% per year.
Yeah.
This, I've been hearing in the industry, things have really started to level off in the last six months. C-DOT's not putting much work out for bid right now. And so, our timing of bidding this was actually quite good to get, there were six bids. Yeah. To get six bids on a project like this a few years ago, we wouldn't have. And we're excited. F&amp;F is a former ACC, American Civil Constructors. And they'll do a really good job for us.
No, no. Again, you know, just the Lincoln, that was like a month or so ago. And we, and I hear what you're saying, and I'm asking you to kind of just give me a what-if. But, you know, I mean, it's always good to come under the engineering estimate. It, you know, I think, I think I had, personally, I had grandiose thoughts that maybe we would get something like as impactful as that come in on this, but it just, it didn't happen. But again, still, still very glad that it came underneath the budget amount.
Yeah, the last few years, John, I've been, have to go to the AED device in the hall to restart my heart after we'd opened. in the hall to restart my heart after we'd opened bids because inflation numbers were just unbelievable what we were encountering. So this is, this is a breath of fresh air to get a, a good contractor and a good bid. We're excited to get this one going. Now, we've not worked with FNF before or ACC, but as Nathan said, they're, they're known in the industry as being a good quality contractor. We're excited to go forward with them.
Thanks, Russ.
And just my fault for not introducing him earlier, but that was Chris Hudson from Public Works in Engineering. Eric?
So you'd mentioned that some of the neighboring property owners are also contributing to the cost?
Yeah, there's a development going on, on the southwest corner of Matsumbaka. I guess Crowfoot Valley Road is where it switches on that south side. Crowfoot Valley Road and Stro, there's Avalon Bay Development and they're responsible for their portion of the widening of Stro as well.
Do, do we know what that number is?
We're still refining exactly what that is. They, they're paying a portion of the engineering costs as well as the CM proposal, which just came in, which will go to council, the next council meeting. So there's still a couple bits and pieces that we're moving through that we're going to get to a final cost and then they're going to compensate for us as well.
So this 17.7, 17.7 million, some of that is Parker Water's going to help cover a small portion and so is that developer. So that, that number is actually going to come down for the town of Parker?
Correct, yes.
And then I, I know, I, I know we noted there were six bids. We picked the, the lowest common.
Responsible.
Responsible bidder of FNF. Does the town have experience with FNF?
As Chris mentioned, we have not worked directly with them. Our construction manager that we're looking to hire for the project that'll go to council next meeting has worked with them in the past with great success. So they're local, they're not shipping in from another state. They are definitely capable of completing this project successfully for sure.
Were there other bids within that that the town has experience with, that there was consideration to pay a little bit more for somebody we, a known commodity?
The next lowest bidder was somebody that the town had had experience before and has had poor results. So this would be our best bet moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Laura?
Frequently, when these issues come up, they come up and it appears to the public that this project hasn't been going on that long and all of a sudden we're approving a contract. So can you just explain a little bit how long this road widening on Stro to two lanes to the south with a bridge over Cherry Creek extending J Morgan Boulevard to the south and a sidewalk improvements and installation of a new traffic signal has been monitored by the Public Works Department for this improvement?
So going back to when the town initially incorporated in 1981, we didn't, we weren't this far south. But when we did, there was a two-lane Stro Road back then. The town improved that to what you see today in 1987. There was talk that because of development, the way it was occurring on the south side of town, it would be happening in the next five years, is what I was told by a former Public Works Director. We've been watching these traffic increase down there. I've been with the town 25 years. It's just been increasing and now we're seeing more and more growth in the southwest quadrant of the town. The road now has exceeded 12,000 cars a day and that's kind of a magic number where a two-lane road cannot support the traffic that it's carrying. It's actually about 15,000 cars today. So we're going to widen this to four lanes, but it's, the plans from 1987 showed the future bridge. It's been thought about, talked about. And we have developers down there that are paying for their half of the road as well, like Nathan talked about. So it's been a long time coming and it's finally coming together.
Thank you.
Brandy?
I love that you guys are able to get it to where it is this low. I mean, I understand that this is a large chunk of money, but I've been sitting up here for a while and I'm like, oh, this actually isn't as bad as we've seen some of the things that you guys have come to us. So I appreciate all the work on that and I'm excited to have it done.
Questions?
Oh, sorry. Would you agree? I thought we were on comments. My bad.
I would agree. Thank you.
Sorry.
Anne, question?
Questions.
Todd?
No.
I pulled a Dyak.
You did. Someone's got to do it.
I guess.
All right. With that, I would open public comment on this contract discussion at 8:38 for anybody interested in addressing the council tonight. Seeing none, close public comment at 8:38 and bring it back for closing comments and/or debate. Todd, anything to add?
Just, it's great to see yet another little mark of improvement for infrastructure in Parker. The empire grows. Lincoln and now this and everything else that's happening. It's a great work by everyone on your department and thank you for this and I approve.
Anne?
I think this is a major step towards our east-west connectivity and it's just going to support traffic flow and pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Brandy?
I said my comment, but ironically enough, I wrote down questions, but I'll just phrase them as a comment. I love that this is going to help with our traffic congestion that we have and the longevity and that this has been in the works since, I think you said 1987. And so I appreciate all of that. So thank you.
John?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, you know, this is yet another contract, another project that we get to do. And, you know, back in the early days, when Josh and I were new council members.
Less gray.
Less gray, yeah. More hair, less gray. You know, it was a challenge for the town because we had to, before we got here, the town constructed a Hess Roads Bridge to get from Matsumbaka over to Parker Road. And the reason why we couldn't do a second one was because we didn't have the money. And that, that money was, I think, three, four million dollars or maybe less than five, somewhere around there. Here, we're talking about 17 or 18 million. You know, we've, you know, things have increased, obviously. You know, we, we have, we, the town, the staff have been successful at positioning us to, to leverage other people's money. As you, as you heard, this is developer money. You know, if, if we didn't have our friends at the county willing to help out, people like Dr. Cog and, and developers, because when they build here and they provide additional cars on the roadway, we can potentially ask them to, to partner with us as a condition of approval for their, for their project. And this is, this is one of those things. And, you know, for, for doing things like that, the developers come in and I, I think it's, it's common practice. They, they, they understand it and they're willing to help. And, you know, with that, it allows us to kind of spread our money around. So as we continue to do that, we're able to, to roll those Parker dollars forward and we can use other people's dollars to do projects. And again, it's, it's a great thing to, for us to be in a position to do. As we get closer and closer to full build out, we, we will not have projects that we need to do this with. And things like this will, will dry up. And then when the road reconstruction happens, I think that's for another council in the hopefully very far future. But I don't have an answer for that. But right now, my goal is to make sure that we provide our citizens with good roads and connectivity and hopefully we can do that grid thing that Chris talks about. And I'm just, I'm thankful we're in a position to do this. So I'm very supportive.
Thank you, John. Eric?
What else to say after something like that? 1987? No, I appreciate that. There's, there's some cost savings here. You know, it looks like we, we did the right thing by the, the bidding process and vetting, you know, understanding that FNF, we don't have direct experience with FNF, but we're going to bring somebody on that does. They're reputable and we're getting some other people to help pay for the cost. So, great job.
Laura, take us home.
Yeah, thank you. The key issue here is that this has been contemplated a very long time. The staff has worked very hard to make this come to light, to start this project. We have the funds available to cover the construction costs in 2025. There is a need. It is a well-vetted need. It is a calculated need by statistics and numbers by our traffic division and our engineering department. So thank you for your hard work on the Stro ride, Stro Road widening project. Thank you.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion on this recommendation.
I move to approve the staff recommendation as a part of the regular agenda.
Thank you, John. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Dyak. I have a second for Ms. Wilks. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. And build the road. With nothing else in front of this council, we are adjourned. I have sat up here for 12 years. I have never seen that camera move until tonight.
No, it was weird. It was making all sorts of noises.
It was so weird. Tonight, I'm all.